Six P M nine thirty eight Fresno Street. Notice this meeting will be held in accordance with the California Government Code Section five nine four five three subdivision apparent E of the Ralph M Brown Act. California government 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 code section five four nine five zero. City of Newman Resolution next to number twenty twenty two dash ten and the Federal Americans with Disability Act. Given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID, this mean will not be physically open to the public. All members of the public may participate and comment via. Video conferencing at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash zoom dot U S forward slash J forward slash nine three five four five. Four three zero eight nine seven passcode of nine six four three eight zero and via teleconference by calling six six nine nine zero zero. Six eight three three mean I D nine three five four five four three zero eight nine seven with the passcode of nine six four three eight zero. When we get back to chambers, it'll be nice not to have to read that thing anymore. Can we please stand for the pledge legions and remain standing for the invocation? Ready begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yes, good evening and invocation this evening is. Dear God, we commit this meeting to you. Come and reveal your will in every aspect of our lives. And as we discuss the affairs of this city, we ask for you, we ask for your will to be done. Show us your purpose, enlighten us that we may know how to how you want us to. Accomplish our task. We desire your glory, your blessings in all we do. Direct our thoughts, our words, decisions and actions towards the right path and help us stay on track. Let your will be done as we plan and make decision for this city. Amen.
Thank you. Item number four roll call.
Councilmember Ball. Councilmember McDonald.
Present.
Councilmember Pimentel.
Here.
Mayor Protam Candia. And Mayor Graham.
Here.
Item number five declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any tonight? Not hearing any. Number six ceremonial matters none tonight. Item number seven items from the public non agenda items.
I have one quick one. I had a citizen approach me and asked me to speak on their behalf tonight about the speed on Yellow Street. Particularly between highway thirty three and the middle school and the citizen was just wondering if we have one of those digital. Radar monitors that shows everybody their speed. So that is all the individual asked me to share. Thank you.
Nubia.
Thank you, Mayor. For any members of the public that wish to provide public comment at this time, you can do so by pressing the raise hand button under the participant tab. Start night on your phone if you're calling in, or you can send the host a message in the chat channel and we will read your comment into the record. I don't believe we actually have any members of the public. Uh, in the meeting tonight and there are no hands raised.
Okay. Thank you for the input on that one ball council member ball. Number eight consent counter A wave all readings of ordinance and resolutions except by title. B approval of warrants. C approval of minutes of the February twenty second twenty twenty two meeting. D adopt resolution twenty twenty two next number resolution authorizing the city manager or fire chief to apply for and execute. Any future agreement with San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District for funding through the Public Benefit Grants Program. E adopt resolution twenty twenty two next number resolution. Of the city council of the city of Newman making findings in accordance with A B three sixty one a government code section. Five four nine five three apparent E authorize remote telephone commerces means for the legislative bodies of the city council of Newman city council.
Move that we adopt the consent calendar for. For these purposes.
We have first, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have first and second on favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four with one absent. Item number nine, public hearing A adopt resolution twenty twenty two next number resolution declaring the existence of a public nuisance under ordinance. Number ninety five dash four.
Good evening, Mayor.
Sorry.
Good evening.
Evening, Mayor, council members. I could take this one. The um. Jump on too early. I apologize if I didn't.
You're going.
Okay, so just to recall for the abatement you currently have in front of you, the resident has cleaned up his location alongside with the landowner. They have remediated the situation in the front and along the fence line that you see there. So no action is needed for this abatement property.
Perfect. Thank you for that, Ali.
Thank you, guys.
So with no action A needed, we'll move to item number ten A. Adopt resolution twenty twenty two next number resolution accepting the bid and awarding a contract to DSS D B A knife river construction. For the twenty twenty S B one improvements project and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreements.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll take this item.
Evening.
Uh, good evening. Um, in January, we advertised the project which consists of repaving. And reconstructing some stormwater culverts for on Kern Street from T. Um, to right past Maine to the alley behind the police department. We advertised those bids through the month of January and most of February and we opened bids February seventeenth. We did receive five bids. The low bid came in well under the engineer's estimate, which was good. The engineers analyzed the all the bids and they did find that knife river construction DSS. Was a responsive bid and they recommended awarding this project to knife river. And we recommend you doing that and I can, um, this will be funded by S B one funds. It's one of the projects on the approval list that. You all consider every year. So we're getting one done. So I'll take any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question for Kathy. I think I might have brought this up uh, once before. Do we have um, a list of contractors that are located? In the city of Newman and they participate in any of the bid processes that are contracts that come up in the city of Newman?
So we have several contractors that are licensed to work in the city of Newman and. They are certainly welcome to bid on any of the projects and often they do and they are awarded. Those are sometimes a little bit smaller projects. But what happens when we put a project out to bid is along with putting it in our local newspaper, it goes out to all the builders exchanges and so that's. Within the Central Valley, every builder's exchange gets the notice to bidders. And then all these companies start seeing these, uh, this project and then they can buy the plans. And then if they buy the plans and attend the prebid meeting, which is mandatory most of the time, then they can, they can bid on the project. And so this keeps it the most competitive, um, gets the most interest in our projects and then we get the best price.
Right. So we do have a mechanism that do outreach to the contractors here in the city of Newman.
Well, we put it into the newspaper. Um, sometimes if it's like a landscaping project, we know we have several landscapers that we work with, so we call several of them and ask them to bid. You know, depending on the size of the project, these types of projects where it's tied to a bigger type of funding, then we really send it out to the builders exchanges. But it's also in the local newspaper. So so our local contractors, they're aware of it. They see, um, they watch the paper for these projects and they can.
Okay, thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I'll bring you back to council for action.
I'll move to adopt the resolution number. Twenty twenty two, a resolution accepting the bid and awarding the contract to DSS D B A knife river. Construction for construction for the. Two thousand twenty S B one improvements project and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreements.
And I'll second that.
All right, we have first and second on favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four with one absent. B first ring and introduction of ordinance twenty twenty two next number. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Newman amending title ten traffic regulations amending section ten point zero four dash zero three zero to establish parking restrictions of semi trucks. And trailers within the city limits. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Um, I would like to introduce Sergeant Williams who worked very hard on this. Staff report and she's going to present it for you. So she's going to step in for me right now.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Um, before you is a proposal to amend an existing ordinance. Uh, it would be ten point zero four point zero three zero of the Newman Newman municipal code. Uh, it is recommended the city council introduced by title and wave further reading of the attached ordinance prohibiting semi trucks and trailers. Parking within the city limits of the city of Newman. Uh, currently there are several streets within city limits in which semi truck trailers and combinations are permitted to park. Over the years, I know while I've been here, this is going on my eleventh year and I'm sure prior to that, we've received many complaints. About parking in these particular areas, which leads to obstructed views for traffic, um, which can obviously result in traffic collisions. Unlawful washing of the semi trucks, which is leading to pollution, um, also some diesel spills. We've had trucks being parked in areas that are not permitted, um, ending up in residential zones, which has led to complaints from neighbors. A lot of semi trucks arrive early in the morning or late at night, um, and the sound is disturbing to residents in the area.
Yeah.
We also have the premature deterioration of the roadways. So currently, while I was looking into this and working on this project. In the areas where parking is currently permitted, uh, over the course of several weeks, I counted the number of semis that were parked there during various times of the day. And it averaged to be about twenty three trucks. Either it was combinations, just trailers, or just the cabs by themselves. If you were to prohibit any parking within the city limits except upon commercial land. Is proposed that signage be posted at certain increments. The cost, it's estimated to be about fifty one hundred dollars and that is for the cost of signage. And the posts, any attachments and fasteners that does not take into consideration the labor, the cost to public works for installing those. It's possible that the cost would also be offset by a proposed fines to be implemented at about twenty five dollars. Per day for violations. Um, you could also see the possibility of saving money in terms of deteriorating roadways and having to repair them. Helping the environment by preventing grease from being washed into the drains and having to deal with the diesel spills and whatnot. With that said, there are currently several locations within the city in which semi truck parking is permissible. Over the past several years, the city has received complaints of unlawful parking of these vehicles and residential neighborhoods. Illegal washing and trade traffic safety hazards created by obstructed views. Therefore, staff recommends city council review the following options presented and provide direction. Number one, except upon the lands of private commercial property, prohibit any and all semi truck trailer. Uh, or combination thereof, parking within the city limits of the city of Newman with no truck parking signage posted at delineated increments. Uh, in the formerly permitted parking zones, violators would be subject to a daily administrative parking citation with a fine amount of twenty five dollars. Uh, option number two, leave the existing permitted semi truck and trailer parking zones within the city limits of the city of Newman as its. With that, I am happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
I have a couple of questions. There's already parking spots for them that are commercial parking spots within the city, correct? Like the the scale yard and that that they could pay a fee to park there.
Correct. Yes, there are locations within town. Uh, it is commercial property. Uh, there are rental spots available. I spoke with one in particular and they did tell me that they charge, uh, at the time it was a hundred dollars per month.
Okay, and if we if we enact this, that they will be able to get. Warnings apparently, um, as this law comes into effect or this municipal code comes into effect, correct?
Yes, we would be willing and of course, dealing with that. Educating the owners of the trucks or the truck drivers to to work with them and let them know that the changes and the options.
Uh, any questions from the council?
I just want to um. Say to Ms. Sergeant Williams is that she's been around for a very long time. We really enjoy your service. You've been a true patriot. In terms of the city of Newman and um. And it just, you know, warms my heart to know that you you're really involved in terms of what we do here in the city of Newman. And I congratulate you in terms of your your efforts and things and thank you so much for your work that you do here in the city of Newman.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I love working here. Thank you.
Great.
All right. Uh, so with that, we have two options as you guys saw, one was leave it out is to, uh, or one was to make the adjustments recommended. By the sergeant and number two was to leave the things the way they are. Um, with that, I'll bring you back to council for any kind of action.
Um, you know, I have something to say about that. I mean, I, I don't know what the permitted trucks are in town, but I agree that we shouldn't have semis parked in driveways and residential. I think that is, I've seen a couple of those. I could be making enemies about that, but I haven't seen anything on the streets that really. Well, I live off of Merced and all the trucks, they they park on the north side of Merced by the P G N E, which is that it's great. I. I would think we should not have trucks on the other side of Merced where the residential, because that does create a blind spot. Now coming out of eucalyptus, you have a little bit of. I guess you would have a little bit of more time if you stuck your nose out, you could see the cars coming, but just keep the trucks on that one side and I'm happier. I mean, that's, I don't, that's all the trucks I really see in Newman. I see them off the side streets by Saputo. Yeah, there's all kinds of parking right there on them streets. That's not residential either, but yeah, you could move them there if you want to move them out of other places. But that's all I got to say about that.
Any anyone else? All right, well, do we need, uh, anybody have a recommendation on action?
I do. I'd like to go ahead and um. As we take action on first recommendation and how would you like this?
Nubia, how would you like this done? Because this is a first reading and introduction. Do we just need to accept it and recommend going with number one and have another reading on it?
Yeah, it would be, um, it would be a motion to introduce the ordinance. So then you can just read the title of the ordinance.
Okay. To approve the first reading and introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty two and ordinance of the city council of the city of Newman amending title ten. Traffic regulations amending section ten dash zero four dash two three zero to establish parking restrictions of semi trucks and trailers within city.
We have a first on the reading. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four with one absent. Sergeant, great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, item number eleven, items from district five Stanislaus County Supervisor. Good evening, Mr. Condit.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate and happy to be here with you all here tonight. Uh, looking forward to attending these meetings in person. Uh, but I do have just a couple of items I wanted to report on Thursday. Uh, it's going to be a big day for us. I know that council member. Uh, McDonald is going to be attending our visit from the secretary Lourdes Castle Ramirez, who is in charge of the California Business Consumer Services and Housing Agency. She's been designated essentially by Governor Newsom to kind of spearhead the homelessness efforts throughout the state and she's going to be visiting Host House in Patterson. Uh, we're very excited to be hosting her at Host House and a council member McDonald will be representing the city of Newman. And essentially what our efforts are and trying to do is kind of lead the conversation in regards to homelessness. I I do think personally. That Host House and Naomi's House in Patterson is doing a wonderful job and is kind of the model we want to build off of in the terms of giving more of a hand. Up than a handout approach and I think Dr. Boyer has done an incredible job and that's something I know other cities in our county are starting to emulate. So it'd be nice to share that vision with a state representative who has the governor's ear and can essentially go back and report to Governor Newsom. And let him know of the progress that's being made here in Stanislaus County and specifically on the west side. Uh, so that's kind of our objectives and hosting the secretary and I'm glad that we're going to have the city of Newman represented at that meeting. Uh, outside of that, also on Thursday, we're going to be having our West Side Healthcare Task Force meeting, uh, which will be on teams. Uh, we're still. Uh, conducting those meetings, um, on teams and you know, uh, via these methods as of right now, that's kind of. Uh, the consensus of the groups that they want to keep it virtual for the time being. Uh, so we will be having that and um. That's essentially all I have to report tonight. I'm more than happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, good question. Uh, could you, um, supervisor, could you send that information the time, um, of that event in Patterson to me?
Of course.
And, uh, and what they expect of me as as the representative.
Sure, of course. I know I will have Russell follow up with you, council member. Uh, the time I can tell you right now is going to be ten A M. And of course, that that's at four oh five South Fourth Street in Patterson. And I think the expectations are just to give your insight on a kind of how homelessness has affected the city of Newman. And I know that's more prominent in Patterson specifically, but you know, what happens in one city affects the other. So and also just your insight as a, you know, a local government official and how we could work better with the state and and kind of having them understand that. Understand that a one size fits all approach doesn't necessarily work and that and that's why we we just want to make sure that our smaller rural communities are represented. And that's why we thought it was important to have the city of Newman at this meeting.
Okay, there's still having to follow up with me in terms of, okay, thank you.
I will do that. You got it.
Any questions for supervisor? Thank you, supervisor.
Thank you.
Item twelve items from city manager and staff, Michael.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, council member McDonald, about an hour ago, I sent you all the information again with the address to the host house and the time.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
You're welcome. So, um, just a couple of things to report out. Uh, we are tentative, we still on schedule to have a live meeting. On March twenty second, two weeks from today. So your next meeting is scheduled to be live and in the chamber. With that means said, um, there are some change, there are going to be some changes to the chamber from for the existing ones. Um, so we're trying to schedule a training session next week. We need about half an hour of your time. To do some training session out there. The mayor is going to have a couple of extra things on there, but we're going to an electronic voting. Everybody will have a little, um, screen touchscreen in front of them. So when it comes time to vote, they just push the button, guess, no, or. Or apps gained from those and then the mayor will push a button and it'll show up on the screen of what the vote was and it'll say all those things. Also, one of the things we're going to have to, um, we'll have you on is how, when you first get there, how to log on because you'll log on with your name. And what happens is is that microphone is now assigned to you. So once you start talking, the camera automatically pans to you and put your name up. So when we're when we're, um. Telecasting it, you're you're, by talking into the microphone, your name will automatically appear so you can see who's talking. So with that, also our microphones are going to be extremely sensitive. So little things that you say could be picked up. Be very careful of what's being said there. Even, you know, we in the past, we've had, you know, we've had close talkers and we've had far talkers and, you know. The new microphone setup is really geared to catch both of those. So even if you're sitting back and you're saying something. There's a potential that might be picked up by the microphone. So we just wanted to get everybody to be cognizant of that. Um, that what you say may be picked up by the mics and heard by the public. Um, and then also for the mayor and also Mayor Protam. You will have controls on obviously when to set up the vote. You will have, um, you will have the. The setup to, you know, record the vote to say, okay, everyone voted out. It'll record and it'll be shown. You'll also have an opportunity. We don't use it that often, but in in the events where there's a lot of speakers, you have the opportunity to set a three minute timeline. Uh, schedule and then a clock will run and then it'll tell the speaker when their three minutes is up. So. And we don't use that feature very often, but, um, in case we do have a lot of people that want to speak, that option will be available to. To the mayor and the mayor pro tam who they were running a meeting at that particular point in time. So. A lot of good things that are coming into to the chamber. Uh, we won't necessarily notice them upfront. Um, but as we live stream, because that's the goal now, is we'll be able to live stream these meetings on YouTube. So somebody at home can watch a meeting live as opposed to currently, you know, they can't watch it till the next day. Um, so a couple of major major changes that are going to be taking place here.
So should we get there half an hour early for makeup or what's up?
No.
Mister Mike.
It's probably high definition too, you know. Okay.
Yeah, he's just happy to be in that chamber.
Different said, and just a reminder, those meetings start at seven.
I know.
So it's going to be past John's bedtime.
It is. Getting close. And you gotta turn your clocks back or forward Sunday.
Yeah. Okay, um, I sent out an email last week and I heard from the council member Pimentel and I'm going to reach out to him. Uh, we're very close on the property tax agreement. Fact, the goal is to have that done by May of this year. Property tax in California is a very complicated item. If you'd like to sit down with me on a one on one, I can go through. Property tax and how it affects us and how we're moving forward and on that with you. So. Um, I'll send out an email again with my schedule and then if you're interested in a sit down meeting to discuss that, happy to do that with you. And John, I'll be reaching out to you tomorrow and we'll set that timer.
Is there any, excuse me, Michael, is there any exemptions for senior citizens?
Um, I don't know. We don't, we don't locally have them, but they may have some down at county level. Uh, just a reminder for council member Ball and council member, um, McDonald, two plus two is scheduled for next Tuesday, March fifteenth. Four P M at the council chambers. I'm happy to report, we have a conditional offer that has been, um, that has been made and we hope to have. Our new C S O. Um, we had one C S O that left us at the beginning of the calendar year. So we have a new one scheduled, I believe, to start April first. It'll be at working out the at this current time out of the P D mostly working with animal control. Uh, very experienced young ladies that we're we're happy to have her coming aboard. And then Thursday, the chief and I will be doing. Will be doing, um. we'll be doing interviews for police officer. So we'll have a new police officer hopefully here shortly to go in there as well. Chief Richardson, will you just talk a little bit about what, we did some stuff on Yolo when you do your report? We just did, recently did some stuff on Yolo first beat. We talked about that a little bit. And then so when we originally passed Measure L, which is a street tax, and that came into effect, we did a big project, you know, we did that one point five, one point six million dollar project where we've paid that off. So we're only waiting now for the county to complete this pavement management system. What they're doing is they're going throughout the county and raiding all of our roads in the county. So once we get that data back, we want to come back to the council and say, these are our worst roads now. Which roads would you like to fix next? And so we're hoping in the next, you know, thirty to sixty days to get that data so we can bring something to you, so we can then plan another big project for maximum impact on our communities. So with that, I can answer any questions the council may have.
On the roadways, Michael, once, once we have all that lined up, I know we have done one a couple of years ago. Once we have it like a progression plan for the roads, we're going to do this road this year, this one the following year, so on. Is there any way to get that online for residents so they know that we're not, that their roads are coming up, the ones that need it?
Yeah, and we have a couple of different things on. I'm working on right now just a, a list of road projects that are currently underway. So I'm going to get that out to the council probably next week. Once you see it and you like it, if you like it, then we can post that online, just so that the council, the community know which projects are coming forward. And then, of course, Mayor, once we decide on what the next Measure L projects are, we can work out a timeline and get that out to the public. So, so they'll know what that is. We'll also invite them to give their input into which roads they think should be next when we do a big, when we do a big project.
Perfect. Thank you. Any, any other questions for Michael? Thank you, Michael. Ally, good evening.
Evening again, Mayor, council members. Just catching up with you guys. We currently have two programs underway. We have the Adult Men's Basketball League that takes place Sunday nights at Yolo Gym, and we also have the Adult Volleyball League that is a two-nighter on Tuesdays and Thursdays with KEO currently occurring. Apart from that, we're moving on to the farmer's market. We are currently getting vendors signing up for that, signing up for that with a lot of new vendors that's coming up here. So hopefully, the amount of vendors we get out there is going to be a good substantial amount and a little bit more of different things coming into our downtown area on Friday nights. Other than that, I can answer any questions y'all may have.
Any questions for Ally? Thank you, Ally.
You're welcome.
Chief Richardson?
Evening, Mayor, council members. Touched on a few things tonight, but first, thank you for introducing that ordinance. It's become quite the issue with the trucks, and especially on weekends, they like to work on them on the streets, which is currently illegal municipal code within the City of Newman. But there, you know, oil going down our drains, they're tearing up our roads. So it's time for us, I think, to take a hard look at action. And there is places for them to park, you know, reasonable amount. So I don't think it should be putting anybody in the city off any that drives truck within our community. So we'll do our best to educate them before we'll start imposing fines on them and try to get them, work with them the best we can. Speaking with two Council Member Balls issue, here's another thing that Sergeant Williams came up with. We've also heard those concerns about speeding on Yolo and on T Street from kids going to school, our parents taking their kids to school. We sat out there with regular marked patrol cars, and of course, nobody speeds when there's a marked patrol car. So she came up with the idea, because we continue to have complaints, to put an officer in the morning in a unmarked police car, and it has been very successful the last few days, even to the point where the school district was calling us to make sure we knew that there was a unmarked car pulling people over in town. So it's getting out there, and I've noticed it on social media too. So that's us pulling people over because we are listening to the community's concerns. This is actually going to be the Sergeant Williams show that I'm talking about tonight. So another thing, last Saturday on the fifth, she came up with the etch and catch program, which was done at the high school. You could bring your car in, have your Cadillac converter etched with your VIN number. It was free to the community. They did twenty-six cars, and the students at Orstima High School got extra, what'd they get? Community service hours for doing the cars. It was a good success, and it lasted for only a few hours. So we might do another one. I know the school district is on board with having us do another one. So another successful program. And then she wanted me to remind you that the crab feed is March twenty-sixth, and there's tickets still available. If anybody out there needs to get tickets, come on down to the police department, and we'll sell you some. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just a statement. Thank you, Sergeant Williams. Thank you, Chief Richardson. Awesome work. So very, very proud of our police department and all its staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I saw the undermark house, somebody pulled over yesterday morning. It's appreciative. Any questions for Chief?
Yeah, I would like to know, Chief, I don't know if you've had any complaints about it, but these bombs that be going off here in Newman, I know I'm not the only one that hear those things at night. And I'm just wondering, my wife was saying, well, maybe it, you know, some celebration. And I said, well, it's not the Fourth of July, and somebody has said some things off. Are you guys aware of that?
We are. I mean, I don't think you could miss last night's festivities anywhere within the city. But unfortunately, that was about a mile outside of our city limits. It's somebody out in the county that continuously does these on the Fourth of July. If you look out into the county and see them going off, it's, we believe it's going to be the same person that was doing it last night. It's not within the city limits, especially the ones last night were not within the city limits. But they were allowed.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Sergeant. I do not see Lou on. Is that correct, Michael?
Yes, correct. No Lou and no Chief Boeing tonight.
All right. So we'll go to Catherine. Good evening.
Good evening. I don't have anything to report, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Catherine?
Yeah, do you guys work in the rain?
We do work in the rain, if we get rain.
Right.
It's very important. Yeah, the rain work is very important because they're keeping trash and debris out of the gutters and also they're cleaning drains so we get good flow. So, yeah, the guys are out there working in the rain.
When it rains.
When it rains.
Thank you, Catherine. Councilman Pimentel?
You know what? When is A M P M mini market coming in? A lot of people are asking about that. They want to get their car washed instead of driving all the way to Patterson. They want to get their car washed here in town. Is there any progress on A M P M? And plus, gas should be cheaper than the gas prices here in town. Does anyone have an answer for that?
Yeah, so all their permits have been issued, Council Member. It's really just them and their contractor. So they're, I think the last we heard Catherine at one of our meetings was the end of this month, you probably start seeing some activity going on.
Very good.
But, but again, it's, it's, it's all in private, it's all in private hands. All permissions have been, all permits have been issued. They're free to move forward. I think it's just a matter of timing for them.
And I have one other question about the old chicken ranch over here. Any progress in them tearing that down or anything over there, that private property?
Yeah, I'll check with the, the person that had that in escrow and see where they're at.
Okay, that's all I got to say. I'm just looking for beautifying our beautiful town.
Councilman McDonald?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, gentlemen.
Councilman.
Oh, nothing tonight, thank you.
And Pro Tem wasn't on tonight, so I have nothing tonight. Thank you, everybody, for your hard work. And with that, I'll ask for a German. Anybody?
God.
Yeah, okay. I move. I move for a German.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
I first and second.
I could say aye. Hope to see you guys in two weeks in the castle, whatever you guys want to call it. Is there gonna, is there gonna be any metal detectors when you walk through there?
Metal.
Well, that's right. You don't have a gun. All right. Everyone have a good night.
Yeah, what kind of band are you bringing?
Right, Mike.